Good morning, everyone. It is Tuesday, June 4th at 9:00 a.m. We'll call the Wright County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So with so many people in attendance, either there must be a hot topic or we're honoring someone today. So I'm hoping it's the latter of the two. At least the way I'm seeing it, I think that's what it is. So first item here today is to dispense with the minutes from the, sorry, Committee of the Whole on 517, the minutes from the county board meeting on 521, and the Personnel Committee minutes from 528. They can be approved you collectively or individually. Stand for any modifications.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Catchmark, second by Commissioner Dietrich. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Same sign. All right. Minutes approved unanimously. Second item here is to approve today's agenda. We have a few modifications here. The first item that I'm going to ask for is that under Items for Consideration, the backfill of the procurement analyst analyst position be moved to next week's workshop. So removing that item and moving it to the workshop next week for bigger discussion. The second item is to add a moment to honor a dedicated service contractor for the county, which will be put at the, right before the 9:05 item. And is there any other items that need to be added to the agenda?
Yeah, I would, Commissioner Chair, I would like to pull off from the Personnel Committee, two items.
So you, the person, the, those ones will be discussed, we'll go through them individually.
Oh, okay.
So those ones, you don't have to actually pull.
Okay.
You did mention, I think you had some warrants you wanted to pull.
Yes, I would like, there's three warrants that I would like to discuss coming up. And where would you like to have that done?
So I'm going to add that so there's time if anybody needs to get here. The three warrants there regarding the, where, what department?
Sheriff's Department.
Sheriff's Department, so that they have adequate time to get staff here if they want to answer them, otherwise we'll leave finance to their best abilities. With that, that'll be under Items for Consideration, five warrants discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, I'm just taking notes here. Okay. Is there any other items for the agenda that need to be added or modified? If not, I'll stand for a motion to approve today's agenda as modified.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Shane.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dietrich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Today's agenda is approved unanimously. Today's consent agenda, would anyone like to remove any items from today's consent agenda for further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, motion by Commissioner Dietrich.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane to approve today's consent agenda as presented. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Consent agenda approved unanimously. Now at this time, I'm going to ask Jamie come forward as we are going to honor a couple individuals for their great service to the citizens of Wright County.
Yes, thank you, Board. I'm here with the delightful duty of introducing to you Diane and Tracy Turgerson. They're foster care, child foster care providers. I know at least two of you on the board have experience working with child foster care and trials, tribulations, joys, and you know, satisfaction that that can come with that. So at this time, I'd like to invite to the podium Diane and Tracy Turgerson. Also with me, I have a number of our licensing folks. If you guys would just like to stand for a moment so they can see who you are, that work closely with our, both adult and child foster care providers. So this is our licensing and our skills unit. And with me is Christine Trichler and Marissa Ferguson, who work very closely with Diane and Tracy. So if it's okay, I think I will read through the information I have and then Christine will present them with the plaque. Everybody ready? Diane and Tracy Turgerson have been licensed for foster care since 2011 with Wright County and with a private agency path. They have had over 70 children come through their home. They have provided respite care, interim care, shelter care, and back on track foster care. Diane and Tracy have adopted two boys from foster care. They have also shared their experience as foster parents by mentoring new foster parents and sharing their experiences at a support group and new provider orientation. They have filled a big need by taking mostly teen placements throughout the years. And as you know, that's always one of our most difficult areas to find families. Wright County Health and Human Services is grateful for their years of service to foster children, and we want to thank them for all they have done, and we wish them the best in their newly found retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything to the Board?
Not, I, no.
Okay. Thank you so much. It is a delight to have you here, and we really appreciate everything you've done for over 70 children that have come through our doors and not yours.
Thank you.
That's impressive.
That's impressive.
If it'd be okay, could we have a couple of pictures?
For sure, that would be great.
And Diane, Tracy, on behalf of the Board and the citizens of Wright County, we can't thank you enough for all the years of service and to all the lives that you've changed. May God bless you and thank you, and I hope you enjoy a little bit more relaxation, I'm sure you've had.
Could we just ask you just a second? Can you be right over here and Michelle will get a picture of you with the Board?
Come on up. Right over here.
Right here.
Put you right in the middle.
Center your attention.
Thank you so much. Thanks.
And now we'll move on to honoring another, some more individuals here. At this time, I'm going to call Taylor forward as we adopt the resolution for claiming the Farm Family of the Year.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Board.
Good morning.
I would invite our farm family to come stand and join me up here. I'm just going to say a few words about the farm family and the program. So the University of Minnesota Farm Family Recognition Program honors farm families from throughout Minnesota for their significant contributions to the agriculture industry and their local communities. This program has honored Minnesota farmers since 1979 and is coordinated by the University of Minnesota Extension, the College of Food and Agriculture and Natural Resource Sciences, and the College of Veterinary Medicine. The families are recognized statewide and at local levels, including Farm Fest, and then the Wright County Farm Family will also be recognized at the Wright County Fair during the Open Dairy Show, so come and join us on that day. Honored families are chosen one per county by the local University of Minnesota Extension Committees based on their demonstrated commitment to their communities and to enhancing and supporting agriculture. Dusky Dairy in Waverly has been selected to be the 2024 Wright County Farm Family of the Year. Garrett and Amber Dusky and their family are the third generation to run their family farm. Garrett and Amber purchased the farm in 2015 and currently raise a 120-head dairy herd and a 300-head feeder cattle, along with a growing beef herd. They also raise corn, soybeans, and alfalfa. Dusky Dairy is a true family operation. Their four children are also very active on the farm. Emmett helps with fieldwork. Hazel takes care of all the chickens, and Colton and Charlotte help with calf chores. And I also heard that Charlotte takes care of all the farm kitties. Garrett's father and uncle also help with everyday chores and fieldwork. Garrett and Amber are also active in their local FFA alumni chapter, which serves their local community. So I believe now we would like to vote on the declaration to make them our farm family.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve that's a resolution for the Dusky Family Farm of the Year.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Catchmark, second by Commissioner Dietrich to proclaim the Dusky Family as the 2024 Wright County Farm Family of the Year. Any discussion? All right, resolution, Commissioner Catchmark.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We'd also like to get a picture, if that's all right?
I feel like I'm being huge a cap down here.
Good job, Garrett.
Thanks, you guys.
Keeping it in District Five again.
See you at the fair.
Yes. All right. And now we are up to the 910 item. We're keeping right on time here as Matt Dutchen makes his way to the podium, one of the hardest working man in Wright County. So we have the approval of the low quote of Moore's Engineering for Engineering Services for County Ditch 19.
Yeah, and I just want to take a second. I've worked with Garrett quite a bit on one of the county ditches and just wanted to say thank you for all the work, for everything.
We're still working on it, Garrett.
So yeah, I do have a different ditch on today. So if you remember back, May 8th, we had a special meeting to discuss a repair request or multiple repair requests on County Ditch 19. After that meeting, we determined that repairs were required for County Ditch Number 19, and the next step was to solicit an engineer for the services required under law. That's Minnesota Statute 103E 715. We also determined at that time that our records for that ditch system are lost or otherwise incomplete, so we determined that a reestablishment of records process was also needed under Minnesota Statute 103E 101. So the requests for proposals were for both of those services. We solicited proposals from Houston Engineering and Moore Engineering. Moore Engineering was the low bid in this case for engineering services on 19.
So I believe this is the first time we've had, worked with Moore Engineering, at least in my tenure, so.
Yep, first time they were a little bid. So obviously, there was a lot of background. We did a presentation for them at AMC that kind of started conversation. Tara Ossendorf, another engineer from Moore, attended one of the Soil and Water Commission meetings and discussed some water quality opportunities on projects. So we kind of began discussions on that. In this case, they were the low bid for this project and obviously check references. They do a lot of work in the Red River Valley and really reached out to references I know in Boyta Sioux to see, and they were very satisfied with the work that they've been able to do on their ditch systems, so.
Very good. So at this time, I will look for a motion to approve the low quote for Moore Engineering for Engineering Services on County Ditch 19.
Mr. Chair, if we could make that motion subject to revisions from the county attorney's office?
Sure.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair, with
All right.
Review of, for revisions by the county attorney's office.
All right, motion by Commissioner Catchmark?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dietrich. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Matt. Thank you. And now we are still right on time, and Barry's going to make his way up to the podium here. We have action on Ordinance Amendment 24-4 for Wright County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 155 zoning.
This feels like the price is right. What's my, what am I bidding on?
$1, Bob, right?
Commissioners, this is a culmination of a long process that started in the late 2000s as a flood map modernization project initiated after the county flew the light hour elevation data for the first time. We were, worked in conjunction with the DNR and FEMA on the modernization project. Unfortunately, it took a lot longer than expected. FEMA had some issues with contractors and vendors. Bunch of federal stuff that went on, and we finally got into the point now where we have the revised maps that we need. As part of that process, we were instructed to update our ordinance to match federal and state regulation. This ordinance is the result of that. The DNR sent us a sample model. Council and I went through it and made it so it fit with what our framework has been and will be going forward. DNR has then reviewed that, those changes and have approved it. It was before the planning commission at their last meeting, and now we're just looking for approval from the Board for the revised ordinance.
Thank you, Barry, and thank you, Commissioner Catchmark and Holland, on reviewing this. You know, I'm going to be disappointed after we approve this, I'm going to stop getting my fan mail from FEMA, so.
Mr. Chair? I was going to note that I read the feedback, the comments from the other townships that we had. I assume all the townships were asked to weigh in, right?
Yes, we send out that, that response form that you see with, within the packet, that goes out to all cities and townships.
So we had five townships that responded. One was a no decision, that's like a boxing match, I guess, they didn't want to weigh in. There were three yeses, and one township said no because it was too restrictive, and the DNR was okay with some bookkeeping things, and then the FEMA was okay, and they commended Mr. Chair for his efforts. So I just want to note that that was, I looked at that to see, you know, bothered to look at it because they bothered to fill it out, but Commissioner Holland and I sat through it and seemed to be reasonable. Does anyone else have anything to?
Mr. Chair, just, are there any significant changes to what we had before, other than the actual floodplain designations, I suppose?
Not some real significant changes. It's a little bit different than most of the framework of our ordinance where we're keeping definitions in that specific subsection because we only want them to apply within that subsection, or they only apply within that subsection. But there were some definitions that we thought were written really well, and so we modified some of our existing definitions to include some of the language that the DNR and the model ordinance had for us. Overall, there's, there's some areas that are maybe a little more restrictive in floodplain, but that's the direction from federal law. And there are other areas where it's actually a little bit less restrictive, where it gives us a little bit more leeway regarding the need for public hearings and the amount of fill and those types of things. So we have a little bit more leeway in portions of it where we can be a little bit less restrictive than what our current ordinance reads. So it's a, it's a little bit of both, and then not, it's not real substantive changes. I think the one thing that'll help the public a lot is we are including some tables and some visual examples of how things are defined and what that looks like.
All right, thank you.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Amendment 24-4.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Catchmark, second by Commissioner Holland. Is there any further discussion? All right. So this one would be resolution, so.
Resolution would be the second part.
Be the second part, okay. So the publication is the resolution, all right. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. All right.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the second part would be a resolution for the publication of summary language of the ordinance. That way, we don't have to publish the entire ordinance, only summary language of it in the paper.
Oh, we didn't want to use up like two pages of the newspaper and spend like $10,000?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Catchmark, second by Commissioner Holland for action on resolution summary language for publication for Ordinance Amendment 24-4. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, Commissioner Shane?
Aye.
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 Resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we are up to the 920 Health and Human Services portion of the meeting. We'll put our Health and Human Services hat on here, and we'll begin with, the first item would be the approval of the Health and Human Services Consent Agenda. There is nine different items on there. Would anyone like to remove any of these items off the consent agenda for further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to remove item, this is under the staff request, six through nine for discussion.
Okay. And then you would make a motion to approve the other ones?
I'll make a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda with those items removed.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Catchmark to approve consent agendas one through five.
I'll second that.
All right, second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. All right, starting with the first item on the consent agenda for discussion would be item number six, the approval request to rehire one full-time eligibility specialist. These are kind of almost probably all in conjunction, six, seven, and eight.
Right, Mr. Chair, so thank you. Well, I think we've, we've heard about this since I came on, and maybe it was before, but the inability to retain these eligibility specialists for different reasons, but we have, what we have now, before, I just want to give the okay to throw more bodies there, is we've had, we have an engagement survey, and we have exit interview information that the staff and Clay has worked very hard on. And I'd be okay with filling these on the condition that the staff work within the next couple of weeks to go through that data and figure out what kind of plan they can come up with going forward to help retain the staff.
And Commissioner Catchmark, because I just want to make sure that this is made very public, is that your argument isn't that there isn't a need for these positions, because you agree that there's the need for the positions. Your, your concern is the high turnover rate. We've had dozens of people that have turned over in that department for a variety of different reasons, and the needing to pull them is to articulate that we need to do better in trying to keep, to retain employees as there's a high cost to turnover.
Yes, and so make it a conditional approval, I'll call it, but using your words when we approve the survey is that's fine as long as we do something with the information when we get it. Now we have it, and I have to hold the people to task to say, we're going to do something with it. Clay's got 300 and some surveys on his desk and 30 people that are going through it. So that's what I would run past the decision makers if there's a consensus to do that for those three, the items six, seven, and eight, that are all called eligibility specialists.
And Mr. Chair, if I could comment as well, just so, just so it doesn't look like, you know, there's a big void or something like that. Health and Human Services has been doing engagement surveys for the past seven or eight years. We do drill it down by division. All of our supervisors get the responses, which are fairly candid. We do make, we make decisions all the time based on feedback from staff. Right now, our training, the way we operate the training and the training we provide is based on feedback that we receive from staff. I did look at our Financial Services Area's Engagement Survey that was, that we just collected just recently. Over 30% of staff, I think close to 35%, were extremely satisfied with working with Wright County, and that's about as far as I went because it was just this morning. So I do believe, and then I think over 52% were, have been here more than five years, and the less have been here. I totally acknowledge that we have a high turnover rate. I also want to mention that that's very similar to everything we're seeing across the state. We're running into, I would say, dynamics we've never seen before over the, since the pandemic with lack of training, lack of access from the state. So they, you know, in order for them to do the job, we need help from the state to get them on board to be able to do the job. Internally, it's a frustrating job, and it's very high volume, high turnover, very transactional. We have about 18,000 cases in the, in the county, but it's not a static number. I mean, we get about 100 applications a week, I believe, that need to be processed. So I just wanted to be clear that absolutely, we can do more, we can do better. However, I do feel like eyes have been on this over, over time. We have made lots of, you know, things that it's not been, it's not been, hey, just carry on, carrying on. I think we've made a true attempt to handle the things that are controllable, that we can handle with the, with the high volume ever since the unwinding started, but I'm certainly willing to, and we have, we do our own internal exit interviews that we review. I just reviewed the ones that, the four positions that are here right now. One of the people left because of retirement, two were promoted to lead eligibility specialist, and one left as a resignation stating that the stress was too high, and she also said that she was very supported by her supervisors and felt like she really liked working for Wright County, but it was just, it had her place in life that wasn't what she wanted to be doing with that high stress load and that high workload.
And it's hard, because when you get into a predicament that we're currently in, when you start having high turnover, the job itself inherently is very rule-driven, and it's a steep learning curve to understand all the rules, and then you have what I'm going to call an antiquated technology system that you have compiled with a really rule-driven system, and you can't learn it fast enough, and because there's so many open spots, you have high caseload, it, the trajectory builds it to be a disaster.
I could go on and on. I would add two, two items, so. One item I think that lends itself to the stress is the fact that this isn't like other areas, we can't create a waitlist. Every application, everything needs to be processed within the timeframes, so there is no, I mean, it's whatever comes in the door we need to deal with. And I would say recently, the state and the county has made an attempt to make potentially mostly medical assistance, well, most of our programs, more accessible. So we're getting higher numbers of applications because they don't need to come in, they can apply online. We still need to treat all of those just like we would if we were sitting face to face with somebody, so the demands are high. I totally acknowledge that.
So, Mr. Chair, could we have administration work with HHS and maybe a two-week timeframe to come back with the Board with some type of plan that's going to come out of these recent surveys? And I can appreciate all that Jamie said, but sources tell me that there's other things that we could do here that wouldn't take a lot of effort, that have come up over and over, and I won't get into it here, those that are here know what I'm talking about.
Well, and I do know, having had conversations with the administration, that administration currently does have a plan, working with HHS to bring forward to hopefully curb this. I mean, it's not a silver bullet, because.
I think we are over the hump, but time will tell, you know?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, so we will have a report out of that engagement survey. Some of it will pertain to things that are going on in HHS as well as across the county. Regarding this specific situation, Kim, Jamie, and our HR Director, Sean, and I met and talked about this, and we have talked about some of the things that we need to do. I can certainly summarize that in one of our biweekly updates and send it to Commissioners to explain what we're doing. I would say largely, probably 80, 85% of this problem is the high caseloads. When you look at the exit interview surveys, pretty much every one of them mentions that and. in some form or fashion. So by hiring more people and bringing that down, hopefully that helps with the stress. There are a couple other little things that we've looked at that we can maybe help people understand that job better before they get into it. We've heard that comment in exit interviews as well, but largely, again, it's the caseloads that are the primary problem here. But certainly would be happy to summarize the things that we are doing, have done, and will do to help this.
Chairman Vetch, I too was alarmed by the four and I did have a conversation with Jamie yesterday because onboarding costs the county money. And I do agree with watching the exit interviews and I'm grateful for the staff input for filling out those surveys. So there is some deep digging to do, but what's hard is the state mandates that they have to get a code in order to work. And to get that code, Jamie, can you explain it takes?
I was just saying, I was explaining yesterday that like not approving positions is, this compounds it because we need to have the person hired so we can get them on the list to get the training and get the access, which is already way behind. So we do our best in that interim when they have them at their desks and we're still waiting for state access to the systems, which as you can imagine is pretty paramount to doing, you know, everything else. So for us to be able to hire allows us to get them on the list, to get the access that they need to do the job and in the slots for training down at the state. We've ramped up our training internally that I think is helping. We've made changes to how we, again, how we train staff and things like that. I do think it's been helpful lately that we, I think the last time we hired three eligibility specialists at once that are kind of going through training together and now with another larger group for eligibility training, I think it's kind of nice that they can come through it at the same time and so they're learning from each other as they're going through. But yes, we need to have the names to provide the state in order to get them on a fairly significant list to get access. I'll just say one more thing as long as I'm up here. The two OT positions that are directly after these, both of those OT positions in that leave, they were both promoted into ES positions that we already had. So the OT positions are due to promotions, which I think, again, the engagement survey and everything else is we're wanting to promote people within that are great workers to do the, you know, the higher level jobs. So it's not always a bad story when we have turnover. Sometimes the story's a good story.
And Jamie, are we utilizing our overcomps that the board approved for the eligibility specialists?
We are just at the point that I think we are having them hired with this group. Yep, a couple of these are the overcomp positions, depending on how, I mean, that's kind of that whole effect, but yes, we are. Like I said, I think the board may be reacting to things that were, they've been dire for a good year now, but I think we're just over that hump where things are coming along. Our supervisors are very much in touch with the staff. They talk daily. I talk with staff, you know, I think Kim's very hands-on as far as that goes. I feel like we're open to hearing whatever, you know, Clay and Admin can come up with, but I think we'll probably get there ahead of them because I think we are really kind of in tuned with what's going on and we hate losing staff, you know? We don't want to lose staff either.
Well, at this time, right now, I'm going to take two seconds to thank all the men and women on that second floor that are doing amazing work at a very challenging time. So I want to give a hats off to all those eligibility specialists on the second floor. But at this time, looking for a motion from the board to approve these four eligibility specialist positions.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Holland.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, just with that little footnote that we get the completed survey information and how that will be implemented and is there a timeframe? Administration is within two weeks, reasonable?
Mr. Chair, if it's agreeable, I can just work with Jamie and Kim to come up with the things that they have been doing and will do and then submit that in my biweekly report in a couple of weeks if that's agreeable to Commissioners.
And then you'll have, you want the copy from, is that the report copy? Is that what you wanted?
Well, if you can give a copy of what the survey showed and a summary and then in turn what you're going to do with those results, you know, how you're going to implement that?
Yeah, and that's agreeable too. We can break that survey down and show that as well and then I can again work with Jamie and Kim to figure out what our plan is.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign? All right. Positions approved unanimously.
And item nine, just, I know that there's an inquiry going on with how practical and useful this Genesis $600,000 phone system is and administration is working on that. I'm wondering about, waiting until that's done to see about the actual need and the workload of these two office techs since that project is not completed.
Sure, I can speak to that. It is an expensive system. We've had it for, it's not new. We've had it for a couple of years now. It's something that certainly helps us with our workload. That was the whole idea. We used CARES funding through the pandemic to implement it in the first place, not all county dollars, actually a very small portion was county dollars. And then with our OT staff, so over time, I would say, and I probably, Commissioner Vetch has been here long enough to see us turn over several OT and case aid staff into case management staff and not asking for additional case managers because it has alleviated some of the support required. The two positions in question, I asked Business Manager Jim Odell for some background on the information as far as what these two positions specifically do. There are two OT positions. Again, these two people were promoted into the ES role, so those two of the four positions you just approved. They've answered about 4,000 calls this year coming through the queue that would direct people to talking with financial services so they can initially do the triage at the beginning of the phone call to see whether that call would need to go to the, go to the case manager, the eligibility specialist, or if it can be handled, change of address, new job, things like that that they would handle. They do a lot of applications, but I would say in this respect, we're excited to see what the project results come out, but I think it really hamper, I'm not sure who's going to take those 4,000 calls if it's not these OT staff because it would then be our front desk staff who are also fielding different lines and they're also doing all of the support staff, we're 250 people. I think if you break down our OT staff between, I think we have about 16 across the entire agency with 258 staff in HHS and we really, we leverage them to a high degree. So it's always, I always say if I don't come into work for two weeks, nobody might not notice. If our OT staff isn't there, everybody thinks the place is coming apart at the seams. So they're integral to how we serve our customers.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to ask Clay and Administration if, can you weigh in on the timing with your study? I think you're heading this up. And if you've got any kind of estimate or how you think so far that that would impact these positions that are requested to replace?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Board members, we're sort of in the middle of that project right now. We have a survey that just went out yesterday to all HHS staff to ask them about the usefulness of Genesis. So I don't know the exact timeline, but I'm going to say probably within a month that'll be concluded. As far as how it impacts these positions, I don't know that switching a phone system would change the necessity for these positions. Commissioner Holland and I, when we were talking to Jamie yesterday, went up and spoke with some of the staff who do this work up there and a lot of what they do is not all predicated around the phone system. A lot of it's scanning documents, a lot of it's intaking and routing people as they come into the office either on foot or via the phone. So I don't know that there's going to really be any change that's going to come out of the Genesis system that's going, or that study that's going to impact these two particular positions.
Commissioner Vetch, yes. In observing what the office tech does, there's just pounds of paper that they have to scan in. And so they're just hustling back and forth and knowing that these people didn't quit, that they got promoted, made me feel better. And they're really not doing a lot of phone calling, phone triage stuff. They're really doing a lot of just paperwork, mindless paperwork. And so I appreciate them and I think it needs to be filled because it's just a constant, there's people constantly up at that front desk bringing things in, so.
Unfortunately, tax returns don't come on two pieces of paper. They come in on a stack, so somebody's got to stand there and scan them all the way through.
I think what they witnessed yesterday too was some medical information for probably a murder or disability type of request. That was, I mean, literally the stack was, was high. And that's one individual. We work with hundreds if not thousands every day.
All right. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the rehire of the two OT two positions.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Holland.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign? All right. Positions are approved unanimously. The timed agenda item is to adopt resolution 2406, adopting May 2024 donations.
Yes, we have had a $1,000 donation from the Annandale Lions Club for our Wellness on Wheels program. Thank you to the Lions of Annandale.
Yes, we appreciate their support and at this time, I'll entertain a motion for the resolution 2406 for the $1,000 donation from the Annandale Lions.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Dietrich.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, I vote aye.
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 Resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, Board. No director comments today.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, we are up to committee recommendations as we move on to the items for consideration. So the next item would be approve the recommendations from the Committee of the Whole County Ditch 33 Emergency Repair. Coming out of that meeting, we had staff to contract engineering for the repair of County Ditch 33 not to exceed the $175,000 and work with projects administration on splitting up ARP funds between 33 and 38 for engineering and other applicable costs. Do note that don't get feared, the $175,000 was nowhere near, the cost engineering was nowhere near coming to that threshold, so. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendations from the May 17th Emergency Ditch 33 meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Shane.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign? All right. Recommendations are approved unanimously. And now coming up to the next one would be approve the recommendations from the Personnel Committee. We have a variety of recommendations. The first one was the vacant position board review that would be regarding the elected offices and whether the backfill of positions from the County Attorney's Office and the Sheriff's Office would be coming forward as other departments for the board review and per the County Attorney's recommendation that those would not be as it would be a statutory conflict. The next one was the mid-year personnel requests, a variety of them, and then there's a policy on 307 for the employee of the year. Is there any items within the Personnel Committee that anyone would like to discuss? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Dietrich, then Commissioner Catchmark.
Thank you. I would like to pull the overcomp for the building inspector and refer that to a workshop for next week.
Okay.
Please.
Thank you, Commissioner Dietrich. Move to workshop. And Commissioner Catchmark.
Yes, well, I could take this, let's see, the first two items, the vacant position and the mid-year personnel request and make a motion to approve those two recommendations, get that out of the way.
Okay, so you're doing the, so your mid-year personnel request, so that would bring us all the way down to only item not being approved would be the Personnel Policy 307, is that correct?
No, there's others.
So you want, you're saying you want the item one, the vacant position review approved and.
And item two.
And item two A.
Right.
Paralegal and that's it?
For now, yeah.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Catchmark to approve the vacant position board review and then the mid-year personnel request paralegal reclassification. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign? All right. Items one and two A are approved unanimously.
And, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So item B, the technical support specialist reclass, I read, I wasn't at the meeting, but I got the minutes here and it basically says challenges with the employment market. And with that as the reason, I'm going to say, I think that the recommendation should be to let this go through the natural order, I'll call it, for reclassification for staff in Wright County and not make an exception or exemption for this or have the staff look into it any further. That would be my motion.
So I guess this is what I would, that's kind of what the recommendation is.
Well, the recommendation is more research done by two offices and I just, I'd say that's not a good use of time.
I guess, okay, I see what you're saying with it. Our always was, the recommendation from the committee was to give this Sheriff's Office as well as any department the same latitude as when they feel that there's changes that should be at least talked about, that they have the ability to talk with HR and work on it. Whether something comes from it that would have to come back at a later date, there's no articulated change or approved change. At this time, they just want to be able to have continued ongoing conversations as to, does this TSS position still, their work, what they currently do as technology shaping still meet it and when and if it needs to change, when that should happen? It's not saying that they are bringing forward a change at this time. It's essentially a no change. It's just informative that they're going to still have ongoing conversations with Human Resources on this.
So a question about procedure, Mr. Chair. Why wouldn't this go to a closed session? Because this seems similar to something else that's being requested and going on that's in a closed session to deal with something similar to this.
This is not, this is not, this is about a discussion of the job descriptions of the TSS positions and does that job description meet the workload that they are currently doing, as well as they had discussions about market. Now, if you, we had a discussion about the market and we have, as is noted under the item two A, that there is a county, we intend at some point to do some sort of a compensation recalibration, which may solve this TSS issue, but we don't know that we, we're guessing that this recalibration will fix some of these things, but may or may not happen. So at this time, the, I would say, if you want to change the recommendation, is that I would change the recommendation to say that the TSS position should have the same recommendation as two A in that the TSS position to be included in the county recalibration and compensation and classification project planned for 2025. To me, that would be a better recommendation than what me is.
Commissioner Vetch, what I would, what I'd like to see on this one is do a hard hold on this until Oracle comes because I don't think that that position, from what I'm told, is going to change exponentially. And until Oracle's here, we won't know how this position will morph into something bigger. We, because, and we don't know when Oracle is going to be, you know, with all the body cams, when that's going to be coming forward. So I would say, instead of wasting all of our staff time, I say we put a hard hold on this until Oracle's here, then go, so we're not doing this twice.
So ultimately, looking at this, there's likely to be no change with it. And if you want to unilaterally kill it or let it die, I, having had discussions with HR and the changes to the job description likely are not to yield any kind of change to it, but you want to, at least for the due diligence, let the process play out and let the third party review it and if it comes back to no change, which is likely to be the case.
Mr. Chair, I can maybe clarify a little bit what the intent is. So normally, when we do a process like this, the way that it starts is HR and the department have a conversation about what the position is, what the qualifications are, and if it merits us to take a look and take it to Personnel Committee. And I think the intent of the motion was for HR and the Sheriff's Department to do exactly that. So I don't think it was above and beyond what we would typically do. It was just saying, go back, have the conversation, do your further due diligence and see if there is something that merits us to take another look at it. I don't think that it was outside of the scope of what was typically done.
And that's where, we referred it back to just follow the natural process of more discussion. And so essentially, it got a do not come forward because the request was for us to actually make a modification in that Personnel Committee and we said, no, you guys can have continued conversation as standard practice, that doesn't even have to come to the board. So most of the time, they have conversations with HR and. So most of the time, they have conversations with HR and it comes forward after they actually have a solidified recommendation. We didn't feel that they had a strong enough recommendation at this time. We sent them back to the drawing board. That's what the recommendation reads to me.
Mr. Chair, it just seems like this then is an open invitation to the rest of the departments and offices that, hey, if you just throw the employment market challenge out there, that you'll then get, get your day with your staff and HR staff to get the okay to spend time and then come to the board. Then we're introducing recalibration. It started out reclassification, now we're adding that other step. I just don't like the route that this is going.
I get where your concern is. And I mean, I'd love to just sit there and say, I don't want to hear from any departments. I'm just going to say, blankly say that, you know what, we're not going to change any job descriptions. We're not going to change any employment terms. We're just going to just say, hard line, that's what it is. But the reality is, is we have a very versatile economic situation here, especially from an employment perspective. There are winners and losers. There are jobs that are more sought after than others. And we have to be able to deal with them on a case-by-case basis and on a day-by-day basis. And we've even shrunk down that day-by-day basis. We've already put it down into three times a year that they can actually even make these requests. So we have honed it down. It used to be that they could come on any board meeting with these, but these now can only come on the board three times a year.
But Mr. Chair, isn't this one making an exception and exemption and taking it out of that natural order, that three times a year or that rotation where we have certain offices or departments take their turn?
Mr. Chair, maybe I can address that. So the requests, we, at the staff level, we reviewed all the requests that were made. And then we made recommendations to the Personnel Committee of how to proceed. And that point specifically was made that, and that's why this was referred to the future recalibration, was because it, we felt that it fell outside of those bounds of it was an urgent need or whatever the criteria were that we laid out. And if you look at the recommendations from the Personnel Committee, a lot of them, I mean, that was the reasoning why they were recommended to not move forward or to move forward with a recalibration or with a budget process, was for that specific reason. So we are trying to honor the intent of what the Board has asked us to do in that those requests only come forward under certain circumstances that we've all agreed to.
Chairman Vetch, but what I've learned is that when Oracle starts, this position is going to change. It's going to be different. So that, and I would rather wait and do all this work once that, once we know what's going to transpire with Oracle, which we still don't know when that's coming.
From where?
Sheriff.
Once they start the position.
No, where, where have you learned that from? Because that's not accurate. It's a records management system to another records management system with an addition of body cams. But the job itself is not going to tremendously change in any scope. It's still going to be the job. The reason that we brought this forward was because of, to Commissioner Vetch's point, the, the market right now is favorable to employees that want to make a move. And there's actually an offer on the table. And we're saying, hey, this is a very valuable employee. We're doing our due diligence to try to keep a valued employee. And if there's some change that can happen in there, then fantastic. If not, we'll go back to the drawing board and we'll, we'll take other means. But in the meantime, we lose a valuable employee. So we're just doing our due diligence. But for the comment that this job is somehow going to miraculously change, it's a records management system to another records management system. It's just not accurate.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I appreciate the honesty, Sheriff, on the, the point that there's an offer on the table to potentially lose someone. But then we're going down that slippery slope that any one of us could go to a private sector, even another government, and make more money. And that then says, if you can make that case, then walk it through the system. I may from Commissioner on down. I could move to Hennepin and make six figures. You could go to any private business and make more money. But there's other advantages to working here. So if we're going to rewrite and change the rules to keep somebody, then it's, it's a slippery slope with double-digit offices and departments and eight to 900 people.
And do note that we, as a Personnel Committee, we did not approve any modifications and we warranted that. And that's where we said, there is no information here that warrants us to be able to take action on modifying that job description. We said, go back to the standard process of having more conversations with HR and as if there is something in the future that would be articulable for us to review with changes, bring it back. That is what this recommendation is saying. We are not saying that we are modifying that job description. We are not saying, we're extending the, to give them, extending the same process that they have had, even if we deny this, they can still have those conversations. So.
Mr. Chair, I had a question. Since this came up here and I wasn't at your meeting, but did the Personnel Committee Commissioners have the information that there was an offer on the table for one of these positions? Was that mentioned?
They, he did mention that there is a competitiveness in the market that our other counties are trying to siphon off some of those staff from us. Yes, we were aware of that. And we said that we are aware of that in many aspects of the county. It's not immune to just the Sheriff's Office. We do know that there is, at some point, we will have to do a market recalibration because certain counties have already done it. And when they've already done it, they're siphoning off employees from us. And once we do it, then it's, we siphon from them. Because that's what employees are doing in this market now. They're always looking to see who's paying the most money for their talented skills. And at some point, we hope it levels off, but in the meantime, that's not the case. But as we articulated to the Sheriff, we understand his, his situation and we, and I respect him doing his due diligence for his employees. He feels he has great employees and I think he wouldn't be doing his job if he didn't come forward here to advocate for that. We respectfully said back that we have a lot of other employees in this position. We, in due time, will do something to fix it, but it will not be happening here in the immediate month or two months. It is probably a six to 12 months out.
I'd be okay with six to 12 months.
Well, we're not doing, so I think there's a confusion on what's being asked here. So what's being asked here is that we're saying we are doing, this TSS position stays exactly as it is. We, as would the, approved by Commissioner Catchmark on item two A was that we articulated to the County Sheriff, or to the County Attorney, as well to the County Sheriff and all of the department's heads that were in this meeting, that as a county board, we do know that we will be doing a market recalibration. It will not be happening in the next six months. It is likely to happen in the more of the six to 12-month period of time. Just right now, we feel it's too early to do it. Not enough of the market has done it. And if we do it too early, we will find ourselves on the bottom side of that, of that equation and putting us right where we are right now, losing multitudes of employees to our sister counties and cities. So for that point, we have decided to just hold tight. We do know that that puts us at risk in the short term of losing employees, but we feel that we have a great work environment. We encourage our employees here at Wright County to stick with us. We value you. We want to work with you. We understand that there may be better offers out there, but we offer a one-of-a-kind work environment and I stand behind you. And for that reason, this recommendation is.
Mr. Chair, are we, was there a motion or anything on that?
No, nope.
I would like to just make a comment under Policy 3A, the change to the Employee of the Month program. Just a comment that I was a little disappointed that we moved away from the option of if a parking spot wasn't available, that we would offer PTO as, as an alternative. And we switched that now to a gift card. And so that's just my comment. I was disappointed. We just implemented that and felt it was a good goal at the time. And that's all. I just, I'm just a little bit disappointed that we've changed that.
Mr. Chair, we had a motion several minutes ago.
Oh, we voted on the first one, too.
No, but on the B, we didn't vote for this TSS.
You made a motion on that? I'm sorry if I missed it.
Yeah, you had, you had morphed it into a non-motion in your own way.
I apologize. I wish you would have called me on that. I didn't realize that was a motion.
The chair being the chair, but, but yeah, I made the motion to let, let this go through the natural order and not have any more research done by anyone.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Catchmark to, I guess, trying to make sure I understand it.
Have no further research done and have this go through the natural order.
And I guess I'm okay with that because that's really what the. That's really, that's really what the recommendation is. I mean, it may be more wordy to it, but it's essentially, the sheriff still can come and have conversations with HR about that position. You can't preclude him from doing that, no matter what recommendation you do there.
Why are we here, I guess, then? Why is this here before us?
Why is it here? Well, that's where, I think the recommendation language is probably not the best, the best, the recommendation language should have stated that no change, continue to have conversations with HR for possible changes in the future. That's, if you want to change that, because that's really what it is.
Okay.
It's no change and continue to have conversations with HR to maybe bring something forward at a later date.
All right.
All right. You guys, you good? We can change the recommendation to that language.
Okay.
We had a motion.
Second.
All right, second by Commissioner Shane. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Aye.
All right. The motion passes for two B on four one. All right.
But Mr. Chair, I can, well, we had the Building Inspector.
Building Inspector referred to the workshop, so that, that was the request by Commissioner Dietrich. Dietrich is to move that to the workshop for some more discussion.
We have to have a motion on that?
We do have to, yeah, we have all the rest of the items we have to make a recommend, a motion on.
I had discussion for a couple others, so I'm just trying to, if you want to go chronological. Is that okay?
Yep.
What are we doing?
A motion on two C, the Planning and Zoning Overcome Building Inspector, to refer to the October, or, sorry, October, the June workshop next week.
Did I not make that motion already?
No, you said, you asked for that, you asked for that change, but it wasn't through a recommendation.
Okay. I would like to make that recommendation.
We have a motion by Commissioner Dietrich.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right. The item two C is approved unanimously to the workshop next week. The IT Telecom Reclassification System Engineer.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I didn't have any, anything to add. I'm, I'm good with that. I'll make a motion to approve that recommendation for letter D.
And I'll second that.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Catchmark, second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right.
On letter, letter E.
Item two B passes unanimously. All right. Letter E.
Mr. Chair, so in talking to administration, I let them know I'd be asking this today. But it sounds like if we add this one appraiser, it, it covers the current additional townships and then there's room for growth, let's say, if in the next couple of years, a city or a couple more township says, hey, we want your services also. And I was wanting someone to explain what that, I'll just, for lack of a better word, the downtime will be used for, because this does, the, the new townships we're taking on doesn't amount to basically 2,080 hours of work. So I'm looking for an explanation of how we justify the, of a full-time person for that with anticipated growth, but no guarantee.
So, and I guess I'll leave staff to you. Tony, you want to address it or is we had?
Good morning.
Good morning.
The growth itself within Wright County, this county is very dynamic. In the last four years, we've had an additional 4,700 parcels created. We've been basically juggling and trying to accomplish some kind of a balancing act with the existing staff that we have. We've got two districts alone that, right now, our appraisers are averaging about 4,000 parcels apiece. We've got one district that's 6,900, another that's 5,400. So we're shifting people around doing this. We've hit a tipping point, basically, with the 1,800. The growth, the other growth that's probably being mentioned is districts that might come our way because of local assessors, local assessors retiring. We feel right now where we're at, if we had a district come our way, a small one, we could absorb that. The, the position itself is not going to be sitting there doing nothing. We've got plenty of work for them to do.
Well, and to the point where you articulated at the Personnel Committee, I don't know if it was memorialized in the minutes, is that you currently are operating with zero extra capacity. So backfilling if any position would happen to come open, or if there's people on extended leave. Right now, you are operating with zero extra capacity. So this actually gives you a little bit of buffer if, when and if any of those situations are people taking extended leave on vacations where before you might be, depending on the time of year, not able to honor it.
Yeah, and very little of that. I mean, if we're looking at ourselves growing by 1,000 parcels a year, that comes to us. We have to accomplish that work. So I don't know how long that buffer will last.
Okay. And, and it's the question where the, the folks have, still have the independent assessors. They still could find one and we, they still have that option. I mean, there's no pressure for them to give it up. And you're planning, maybe you'll get them, maybe you won't. We don't know.
Correct.
But main point is to, you know, hear you explain that you have adequate workload for the persons, because we questioned.
I wouldn't be here otherwise.
Yeah. Well, thanks. You don't, we don't see you that often, so thanks for coming.
I want to hear the other side of it, too. And Tony, we've had a lot of discussion this over the years, the, the private market. We're still have to do the due diligence of reviewing their work. And depending on how good or bad they do, that workload for us could be high, could be low. So that is a, we still hold a certain level of liability on the private market when townships hire them in having to review their work. And this gives us just a little bit more capacity.
Yeah, and I've tried to be transparent with this at budget time. Actually had it in budget to hire this person, take it out if it didn't, didn't happen. But it was taken out at that time.
I hope you followed the process correctly. So based on their last year's budget, I do remember.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the addition of the appraiser position.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Catchmark.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Holland to approve the appraiser position. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Thank you. All right. Motion passes unanimous. All right, now we are on to the item three from the Personnel Committee meeting, the Personnel Policy 307, the Employee Recognition, or Employee of the Month Program, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Dietrich had a point. Did you have something else?
It was a little out of order, but that's what I wanted to add. It was a little distraction.
Okay. So another point I had was where does the money, what pot of money does the gift certificate come from?
I forget what line item in the budget. I'm going to let either Lindsay or Mark come up there.
I was just going to say, Mr. Chair, that would be out of the Employee Recognition budget, 100.
100, so I thought, yeah.
Is there any option, like, like the vending proceeds can go to that, too? Or is that restricted access that you can't?
You could use that. The, the, we have a multitude of latitude from the vending proceeds. Those ones can be used much more, less restricted than the Department 100 Employee Recognition. We're under public accounting rules.
Correct, Mr. Chair, Mr. Catchmark. The vending proceeds is much more open in how it can be utilized because it is a program for the employees, by the employees, more or less. We do have some certain limitations, but it's not as restricted as public funds where the Employee Recognition Program has to follow the specific statutes related to those programs, and that is what we do.
Mr. Chair, what's the expected amount if we do this $50 gift cards?
600 bucks.
A year?
Yep.
Okay.
Once a month, times 50 bucks, 600 bucks.
Okay.
If they even take it, they might take the option of the.
Parking spot.
Parking spot.
Okay. Well, no, that's helpful. I just wanted to kind of quantify and see if we were interested in the vending proceeds that we got plenty in that fund, too, I think.
That would be something that must be directed by the employees.
On the use of the vending money?
Correct.
Well, okay. Well, they weren't asked to weigh in on this yet because we're, potentially, we're voting on this today.
And to, and your point was you wanted to see this PTO. Is that, was that what you're saying?
Right. I would like to maintain the program as is.
So the reason we went to removing the PTO is because we have a large number of county employees that have an in excess PTO banks that are quite large. And for that reason. PTO banks that are quite large, and for that reason, and that combined with the labor market, we felt that we are not in a position to add into, add more PTO when we already struggle with having people in the building to work just because of vacancies. And then as well as the fact that a lot of employees aren't even actually using their PTO, they're just banking it up. So we felt that doing it as a, a compensation was better allocation.
Mr. Chair, that would have been a, probably a good discussion when we implemented it in the first place then.
Mr. Chair, how, how many hours of PTO were they getting?
It was a half day. It was four hours.
Four hours.
It was four hours.
Whatever their pay rate is.
Yeah.
A lot more than 600 a year for the 50, or the parking spot.
Yes.
For Employee of the Month, for appreciating our employees.
Are we discussing that, that part, or?
You certainly can.
Well, I think if you, if you got your own private business and your own money, that you got a lot more latitude than the public driving around and looking what we're doing, besides the work from home that our employees have, that there's a lot of folks that don't like that. And this, I think, seems more reasonable for the situation that we are in. I like it the way they have it spelled out here. I don't know about the rest. I guess we had two that liked this. That was a recommendation, three.
Sorry, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve the recommendation as written.
All right, motion by Commissioner Catchmark, second by Commissioner Holland to approve Personnel Policy 307, Employee of the Month, as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes for one. All right, next would be the Administration Adopt Revisions to Policy 309, which we've.
Mr. Chair, I feel you've already taken action.
That's what I was just gonna say. I was reading down there, it was kind of a duplication of it, so we don't need to do that. Next would be designate commissioners to serve on the Selection Committee for the Personnel Board of Appeals.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we've solicited applications for members of the public to serve on this committee. We have received five. So would like to have the board appoint two commissioners to serve on a selection committee, or if you wanted to do as committee a whole, you could do that as well. We just need to select a person as expediently as possible.
So let's hope that the, this commitment by these four individuals would be, this interview would be probably their biggest commitment, because like if it historically holds true, they haven't met in a decade, this group, or this panel, so the interviewing itself may be their most time commitment they have. All right, two people raise their hand.
I'll do it.
All right, Commissioner Holland. Cricket's here.
Cricket.
I guess if, if, if nobody will do it, I will, so it's. All right, there we go. Somebody make a motion.
I'll make a motion that Holland and Vetch are appointed the commissioners to serve on the selection.
Yep, we have a motion by Commissioner Holland.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Catchmark. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, refer topics to the June 11th workshop. We're adding on there the procurement analyst position as well as a discussion on the, building inspector position as well. Those are added.
Mr. Chair, I would like to discuss, and I talked to staff about this already, but the viability of the wellness program in Wright County. That would include a look back of the budgeted versus the actuals. And they understand what my request is. If others up here want more information now, I can give it to them.
All right, the viability of the wellness program, okay.
And an update on the ditch project as far as prioritization and staff, and a look at staff billing time to a particular ditch. Are we getting close to that, Administrator Matice?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Catchmark, our, our staff group is meeting today, this afternoon. I can't remember what time, but I have finance, I have egg and drainage, I have everybody involved that they're planning that meeting. Once that information's together, we'll come forward and set a meeting date.
Staff time to what ditch?
All the ditches, so all the ditches that are on, on the record right now, where we're at, what we've done, timeframes, and then some policy discussion on how we assess them. Do we assess based on actual costs versus, versus estimated cost on repairs? Do we keep a positive balance in each ditch account? Do we not keep a positive balance in each discount? So we have quite a laundry list of items that we have on our list for today to talk and gain information from.
Yeah, I don't know that, you're not looking to bring, that's way too big of a discussion for us to be doing in the workshop, based on the number of items around here, unless you guys are planning and having dinner here tomorrow night.
Mr. Chair, I believe that will be a drainage authority of a whole workshop, meeting that we're going to have to schedule.
That, that's what I, I was, okay, I was making sure, because I think there's a lot of items to discuss there, and by the time we go through each of the different ditches, I mean, that, that'll be a two-hour meeting in its own.
You're looking at it, probably at least a two-hour meeting.
Yeah.
Yep, a lot of information that has been getting put together, and we're continuing to plan that meeting out today.
Yeah.
All right, I had to start somewhere, because I had an update, I want everybody involved, but the piece on the billing, so you got something to think about, is right now, everybody is paying in the county for staff time on a ditch that they may never know about benefit from or otherwise. There's an option, I guess this is a pass board philosophy, to, to do it that way. But we could look at, if you're, if staff's working on a certain ditch, they bill the time they're spending on that ditch and the benefit of landowners pay, instead of the rest of the county. And we don't have to debate it here, but that's, that's what we got.
We can debate it at a later time. I, I've, I've had this debate with many different commissioners over the years, so I'm willing to have that debate though.
Yeah, okay, that's one piece of it, but thank you.
Yeah. All right.
That's all I had to add.
No problem. So with that, we looking for a motion to, actually, we don't even need to make a motion, those are just the consensus, that those are the items on the workshop. The viability of the wellness program, one addition, the other one would be the addition of building inspector, as well as the procurement analyst position. All right, review the July board meeting schedule. There has been this, come to the attention that there is, the July 19th leaves us with, in a situation where we would be three weeks at the end of the month without any board meeting, as well as on the 19th, there is the situation where there will be a couple commissioners absent from that meeting, so we are looking to move the 19th board meeting to the 23rd to alleviate the issue of having a three-week break from board action, as well as then it just solves the issue of having multiple commissioners and potentially not having a quorum here if another one would miss.
So what you're proposing to have?
The proposing was to move the July 19th board meeting to the 23rd.
16th.
Or 16th, I'm sorry, 19th, 16th.
16th.
16th to the 23rd.
Okay, and then what about the July 2nd? What is the recommendation?
So there'd still be a meeting on July 2nd, there'd be a workshop on the 9th, and then we would have nothing on the 16th, and then we'd have one on the 23rd. Otherwise, there would have been no, no meeting for three weeks.
Okay.
Sounds good, Mr. Chair.
All right.
I'll make a motion for that change.
All right, motion by Commissioner Catchmark, second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes unanimously. All right, discussion on the warrants for the Sheriff's Department, Commissioner Holland.
Yes, Chairman Vetch, we last Wednesday met with staff and asked for three separate items that weren't quantified as to when the rest of the county has to go through and, and add certain line items to why they want the purchases, and if they fall under policy. We did submit that on, on Wednesday, other staff did, and we have gotten a pushback as to wanting to provide that information, that is per state statute and by our auditor. So at this time, I would like to take these items off for non-payment, and that would be item 110476.
So just so you know that these are acknowledgements, they've already been paid.
Right, but they will, they, they assured me that they can go back and take payment back.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, you can't take money away from employees without a judgment or a court order and agreement. We can't just unilaterally do that.
But I think they can, if they get overpaid, they can write a check to the county.
The employee could write a check back to the county, but you have to have an agreement. We have wage theft laws in the state where we can't just go in and just suck money out of someone's account.
I would, at this point, the question would be too, is from, like, a GASB accounting standards, like, does what they submitted for payment meet the accounting standard and threshold?
It doesn't meet, good morning, Madam Chairman and Commissioners, it doesn't meet the public purpose. There's just some additional questions on the public purpose part of it, which we have asked.
So then, to me then, it's more of a legal issue. I guess at that point, I would have, I would say that we would want to refer this to a venue outside of this room to have a discussion on the legality of whether we, we should have or shouldn't have paid for it, and what, what methods we have to recapture the funding if there is an ability to do so.
Mr. Chair, I think that it'd be appropriate for a professional service to take a look at the Wright County financial policies and any statutes that apply, and that should be an outside professional service that looks at that.
Outside county, that looks at the, I'm sorry, I'm trying to wrap my head around it. You're looking for an outside audit firm?
No, law firm.
Law firm? So you want to refer this out to our outside legal counsel, which I'm sure the county attorney is in his offices probably would prefer that versus dealing with this matter on their own, but I will defer.
Well, not to, I mean, maybe Commissioner Holland had another idea, but just me listening to the back and forth here.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, when it comes to financial policies, those are primarily internal controls. However, the public purpose piece that you are referring to is state statute. We are obligated to prove that all money going out our doors is for public purpose, and that our financial statement auditors do do. They do look for all of those legal compliance type issues. But they do a sample. They're not 100% looking at absolutely everything. If we were to do a professional service to look at our financial policies, they're simply going to poll other governmental entities and see what maybe best practice would be. And I think Heather and I have looked at, between the two of us, I can guarantee we've looked at about 50 other entities over our careers to know that we're not far from in line.
So you're looking to hold, hire an outside professional service, whether legal or auditing, to review our fiscal policies, not for the clawback?
Well, you look at me, Mr. Chair, and I hope that all five are interested.
You're the one that just spoke last, that's what I was gonna say.
But I hope that we're all interested in this, but if we gotta refuse to comply.
This is a tipping point. The fact that we were told that they don't abide by our auditing processes is the only way that we can get them to go by the auditing process that we have in place, is to not pay those bills.
Mr. Chair, is this something, I mean, I, this is the first I've heard of this, Mr. Chair, and I think this discussion might be not the right place for this right now. I don't, I don't understand what, if there's been a problem, and it's been a long time problem, and we haven't addressed it, if it's not a problem, or if it's perceived problem?
I, I do think that this is something that is on me and my team, that we should have followed financial policies and not allowed payment. So I need to take this one.
So it's a one-time thing? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, I mean, we, well, I think we just needed to know more on the public purpose of what?
These three items.
What these three items were for.
The question is, at this point, don't mistake this, this is not approved payment, because the payment's already been made. That's, we've already delegated that authority to finance. So at this point, it's more of a discussion as to whether we can or should go from a clawback perspective.
And in other organizations I've been in, we have clawed back money.
And Commissioner Vetch, when I was on the school board, we, this is our major job as being a board member, is to make sure that everybody is doing their due diligence, and we didn't pay those out until the board looked at them. So we have a different philosophy here, I, and maybe we need to go back to the old philosophy then, if people aren't going to abide by the rules of the auditor in the state of Minnesota. I mean, I don't know. I don't know where to go from here, but when, when I go through the warrants and I see three big flashes that can't be accounted for, questions that I ask that won't be addressed, then I feel like we're going down a slippery slope.
And I guess I just don't want to say it's not all the departments, this is a specific example of a elected department.
Mr. Chair, in all the claims review, and there's been hundreds of them, people don't like them, I know, but I, there's been a lot of cooperation since I've been here. So I wasn't involved with this correspondence. I don't know if it's, we were going to refuse to comply, or someone drew a line in the sand, or whatever it was. But the affected folks knew that this was going to be discussed and willfully left this meeting. So I think that's a point of record also, that this is the place to discuss it, because I assume there was behind-the-scenes conversations that this could have been settled outside of the big room. But somebody affected decided that they didn't want to be a part of it, but we are left as the decision makers, along with finance here, who's taken an interest in following the rules. So if, if that's it, I don't know what the correspondence was, if they said nothing, or we refused to comply, whatever it is, but we really have to resolve it, and it seems like it's left to us.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Commissioner, that's a lot of assumptions you just made in those statements. You have, you have no idea why they had to leave.
I know, I pointed out that they willfully left, Commissioner Dietrich, and you can't argue that.
You're implying that they left so they couldn't answer a question?
Nope.
Yeah.
I said they willfully left. Can someone deny that that happened? Nobody forced them to leave.
Right.
Mr. Chair, could I just, and Commissioners, just, I would recommend, just, we take a little bit of caution, and, and I think it's, it's not, I recommend not going to a outside law firm to review this without exploring it a little further, and I think outside of a public board meeting would be a better place to review this. I, I know a little bit about the expenditures we're, we're talking about, and I do think there was a, a public purpose based upon my understanding of the trip, but I, I don't have detailed information about the expenditures being scrutinized, but I think we should take a little bit of caution before we, we go down the route of an audit.
Mr. Chair, if I could say something, without a doubt, I don't think we're looking at whether it was or wasn't. It's just that when we needed the proof of the public purpose, I know myself, when I went to DC, I went through a lot of back and forth, back and forth, and back and forth. Me being an elected official, I had to do that. It was per state statute that that's what I needed to show forth, so. That being said, that's why I did it, didn't want to break the laws, the rules, not just our policy, but the state.
And so I want to caution like to, I, I, this, the dollar amounts on this is less than $800 collectively. So I want to make sure that if we would, outside any contract legal counsel, we'll, we'll defeat the $800 on the first phone call. Not to say that there still doesn't warrant a discussion and a, a correction act, corrective action, I just want to make sure that we, we're doing a corrective action if we can do it internally at, at a expense that is more warranted versus trying to spend more money.
Commissioner Vetch, that, that department was giving, given three warnings as to knowing what was going to happen today. And they refused to comply, so I do think that, I think we need to have the discussion, and maybe if that puts us all in a, in a, a bad position, we need to get outside counsel, just so that it doesn't keep happening.
I, I'm just trying to do our due diligence and making sure that, however we go about this, that we're not damaging the taxpayers on a, an elected official battle, because at the end of the day, if you do any kind of battle on this and them justifying, they may have their point of view, whether they're here to articulate it or not, that they may feel justified in it, and finance has their perspective, I don't know. They may produce documents that say that those were approved at a later time, and then which puts us in a quandary, as if we spent money on attorney, they spent money on attorney, and all those attorneys, theirs and our side, is being paid for by tax dollars on a discussion of less than $800 that may or may not be of public purpose, and right now we're more in a quandary as to, because we don't know. Because they haven't produced information to meet the threshold per the finance department, to feel that they feel comfortable that it was a public purpose. It may still be, but we don't, we, and rightfully so, you've asked for it, they haven't produced it, so it leads you to have to be where you need to be in, in believing that it's not warranted.
Mr. Chair, maybe for clarification, can someone share if there was correspondence that said, we will refuse to give you the data, or we don't have time, or what was, who got the correspondence?
Kate Dahl, the accounting manager, got, sent the correspondence. I don't believe she received anything back after her correspondence.
As did I.
Good morning, Fishers. As you saw, two of you received the correspondence back on the first request on May 30th. The items were approved, and it's out of their budget for the public safety. No further explanation will be provided.
Okay. That speaks for itself, Mr. Chair.
And then, I guess, the response back should be, you know, per public accounting standards, that you need to document this. Otherwise, we will be forced to ask the board at a later date to come forward with a recommendation per what Commissioner Holland is asking, that we remove payment at a later date. So, they have to ask them to justify it.
Mr. Chair, I, I do know that after that correspondence, Kate did send over the state statute regarding, and the auditors, the auditor, per, per state statute, what the auditor of Wright County has said, and they had no response after that. And we've not heard anything.
Mr. Chair, if I may, first, I just want to say that I don't, there's no indication that any of this was not a public purpose expenditure, so I want to be clear that there wasn't evidence that this was a, a expense that was outside of the law or our policies. So, just to be clear about that. Second, Lindsay and I have been having some conversations about this, and I think we would like the opportunity to sit down with the Sheriff's Office, talk to them about these rules, talk to them about why we need these rules, and then hopefully get them to be in compliance with just a conversation that we have with them, before we get too ahead of ourselves and have anybody come in and review this. Because I think once we get the information, based on the conversations I've had, I'm pretty confident that they're gonna come back, that they were public purpose expenditures. We just need the documentation to support that. But, I would like to have some ground rules with the Sheriff's Office of things that we need, in order for our finance team to make sure that they're doing the things that they're legally obligated to do, and that they're making sure that the Sheriff's Office is protected from anything that could potentially go wrong by them not following those rules. So, we're, we're all on the same team here, and that's what Lindsay and I have been talking about, that our role is to help the Sheriff's Office, make sure that they are following those finance rules. And I think we could probably settle that with a conversation, I'm hoping, just between staff. And if the board's good at that, I'd like to just have that conversation with them, set those expectations, and come to an agreement with them of what they're able and willing to provide.
I agree. I think that's a better.
I would agree with that as well. And, and the question here is, you need documentation.
Correct. That's it. And again.
Can we just say that? Can we say that we just need some documentation?
We did.
We did.
They, they.
It was clearly, it was clearly.
It was defining the purpose. No, the question initially was, no, defining the purpose of what the need was, the public purpose, was defining it. Well, we, we've defined that it was a, it was a public purpose for public safety. What we need is the documentation to follow up with that.
Correct. And Mr. Chair, I think some of that conversation has been had, but it hasn't elevated to the level that maybe it needed to, in order for us to make the impression that this is, this is what we need, and this is why we need it. This isn't an optional thing. This isn't, you know, one side against another side. It's, it's purely compliance with the law. That's the only reason we're asking for it. And I think if we have that conversation, I'm hoping we can resolve it, resolve it relatively quickly.
And that's where it needs to be articulated. This, this isn't a politically motivated move by some commissioners, I believe. This is, this is a purely, and it really needs to become from more of an internal administration and finance, saying that, that they're, they're putting some hard policies, and the policy's already there. It's more of saying that we're gonna hold you to the, to the teeth of these policies, and, and stop payments, deny those payments. It, really, I don't like it to escalate to this level, because then it has a feeling of, of a political nature to it, which it, it, it doesn't. And I, I hope it doesn't.
And Chairman Vetch, to that point, we, I would, I did not want to bring it to the big room. I did not want to have this conversation in front. We warned them many times, and we don't want this to continue. So, yes, I, I agree that you should have that conversation, because that's what everybody else in this, they have to, you know, get the same questions from us when we go through warrants, and they, they, unfortunately, they decided not to cooperate. So.
All right. So, I guess at this time, I appreciate, we, we consider this informational as Administration and Finance Department will continue to quantify, and you can come back at a later date if you want to have more discussion on it, but you're gonna work on quantifying the public purpose on those expenses, as you would need to anyways, because of a potential audit, and you'd want to be able to substantiate those claims. All right. At this time, we have a closed session.
Actually, Mr. Chair, if we could agenda, if we could table this item to June 18th, 2024. I don't have an update at this time. I thought I would, but I do not.
Okay. So, the, at this time, we'll be tabling the closed session to June 18th. With that being said, it is 10:33. If there's no other items to come before the County Board, we will adjourn at this time. Thank you.